Have you seen Park County's largest beehive? Come by and check us out. We are located across from the historic Ritz Theater. We offer honey, vintage, handmade and homemade items. The Vintage Beehive is open Wednesday through Sunday, 10 to 5. Like us on Facebook.
Welcome everybody to our sponsor meeting. And please join with me in deciding terms of allegiance. Flag working.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, hold the minutes. You can touch action on those.
Can I have some more money by the way?
You didn't. It was a couple extra company receipts. For the minutes.
No, I'm not from the car, but I'm not from your meeting, I think. You're Carol.
Oh, 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 okay. Is that suppression?
No, doesn't at all. Tony, is that water still on down here?
He's still on, working on it. I'm gonna shut up in the morning. I told him I'd shut up in the morning. I'm giving two nights.
Yeah.
Or two days.
I would think he could replant that whole house.
In two days?
Yes.
Yeah, I would think so. Yeah.
The only changes I see is the window thing is still under discussion.
Oh, well, we made a motion to do that.
Yeah.
But we were gonna vote that, I think, so, yeah. That was what we did last month.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was, you know. New information, man.
If you got it, change what that says, we need to just... Can't just say the minutes aren't people correct.
Well, they're correct as of last month.
You correct through the last month?
No. This is correct.
That's correct.
She said we're gonna have to redo that stuff.
Yeah, I'm just gonna discuss that some more.
So, so we should approve it?
Yes, we should approve it.
Minutes have been approved, or presented?
I'm gonna have to change the country days from Tuesday, because I'm wore out by the time.
I'll second it.
Fright by the time.
Moving to second to approve the minutes from the last meeting? Anything other question? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I should be voting on this. Motion carried. Go wrap it around, Nikki, Justin.
I've got something.
Well, speak up.
My house down on Vine Street, I'm about two weeks away from probably renting it out. I'd like to bring up the conversation of getting that ditch taken care of down there.
I'd like for you to. My suggestion is, put those tiles in, leave space between the driveway and where it starts, with some kind of screen over the end of it. Just let the water eat down through there, go down to the end.
That's pretty much what I was thinking.
Get some rock, cover it, cover it dirt. What do you have?
That's exactly what I was thinking. In fact, where that clay tile layer is, I'm not even afraid to leave the end of that open. That way if it does overflow, it can just overflow on the outside back there. And just basically have a section through the middle and spill down.
Just leave the clay tile as it is?
No, take the clay tile out.
Oh!
And then run the, leave our gap by the driveway.
Yeah.
Run it down so far, then leave another gap at the other end.
Yeah.
That way there's clean outs on both ends.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
How good that is back there.
Jerry, didn't know.
Jerry, didn't know. Um, yeah, I have something to bring to the meeting here. I was, uh, me and my girlfriend, we went out and, uh, a couple of Sunday together, last Sunday ever. And we was, uh, started painting the strawberries that were on, on sidewalks. Kind of reviving them a little bit, you know, for Strawberry Fest coming up. And we kind of noticed that there was a lot of other things that were around that, uh, that needed to be brought up, vibrant as well. And the curbs was one of them. And, uh, the reason why I was hearing it here tonight is that I wanted to ask and see if it was all right for the town council if we donated our time to paint them, if the town will donate to paint.
You're talking about repainting the curbs?
Yeah, the curbs and...
Well, you said repainting the curbs, I didn't know where you meant.
Oh, the, just the colored curves.
You got some cement? We could use some of that.
There are some that should be upgraded a little bit, but, uh... Have we got any of that painted?
We've got some, I don't know how much exactly, but...
It would just be the ones, um, down Main Street here, in front of the police station, the fire station. Uh, bring, uh, brackets, you know, uh, no parking, you know, through these lines there and stuff. Um, then all the way down to the corner on this side of J T's. And then around food liner, and I believe at the corner of food liner, I think that would be it.
So, that's about all the several of that painted?
I think, I think that's just about most of all the curbs there, so...
Yeah, they'd want to be painted wherever the signs are to the corner, so no parking here in the corner?
Yeah, whatever was there before, that's what we, you know, whatever the town...
What's the council saying?
I think that'd be wonderful.
We would donate our time and then...
I would be happy to help paint too.
Yeah, I mean, we were just waiting for, you know, to come down here and talk to you guys about that first, before we just say, hey, you know, we're gonna do this, you know, and, uh, you know, kind of vibrant a little bit. Um, so we can get the town looking a little bit, you know...
Well, it hasn't been a while since that's been done.
Yeah, yeah.
So we need white and yellow then, I think. Do we have any white?
Uh, let's look.
Well, about the blue for the handicap in front of the, they're, uh, need rid of the firehouse.
Is it red there?
It should be, front of parking. I didn't see it, it was all red there.
It's all yellow.
There was some yellow out there where I'm driving to the, right there.
Do you have any problem with us?
I sound like trying to oversee that now.
I looked up on the...
Obviously you don't know that there was never any red there.
I know, that's why it'd be a good time for you to oversee it.
We might have to get some common sense.
I don't either.
Pass on to China, we have $200 of the credit at Menards right now, because some stuff show up for tow bags, so...
There we go.
You need to buy some paint, go get it from there.
I think the board's consensus says it's not a problem.
Okay.
We'll get the thing.
All right.
Moving out, old business? Under old business, we'll take care of this window thing that you just talked about.
Oh, okay, well, we talked about doing those windows and so I called the Elite Windows and said we're ready to go with that. Well, their distributor, that they use for that estimate, they're no longer with them, so we had to get another estimate. And then I was talking to, um, you know, John McGlan said that we need to at least put a couple new windows in the sheriff's office, so the air conditioner won't have to be, um, so we can take out that air conditioner and put in a new window, whatever. But, um, so I having, had him give me an estimate for the three single windows that are in that building, and we'll leave the two, or double, we'll just paint those or something. Because they're another almost $2,000 just to do those double halves, so... So if we did all that, it would be like $14.33 and $0.31 for sheriff's office and $7,447.36 for this office, I think, was a little bit less with the new supplier.
Yeah, it is a little bit less.
Mm-hmm. And so the total would be 888, or 880...
Eight thousand eight? You trying to say four?
Eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty and sixty-seven cents. So, what do you guys think about that? You know, eight, eight, eight.
Three, eight, zero?
Yeah.
Well, if we've got the funds.
Well, we have, we still have $6,500 in care of that money.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, so we would need to, um, up your input from CCI and CCD, I would say.
Yeah.
It wasn't that hard.
We were gonna take the $750 from...
We were gonna take, yeah, we're gonna take $1,500 from there.
Yeah.
CCI has a budget of $8,000 and CCD has a budget of $5,500, so, and those are just for improvements, so... We want to split the balance evenly at a time, whatever you guys think.
I think we do like we just did last time, just split the balance evenly between the two. I'll make a motion to, uh, supply the remaining amount that we need money wise. Split evenly between the CCD and the, what do you have, CCI.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
To purchase and split the difference, uh?
Yes.
This is still with Elite?
Yes.
It's $1,175 per, uh, per CCI and CCD, so...
Okay. Sounds good.
Carol?
Carol?
Yes.
Then move to second to purchase windows from Elite. Windows. The amount of $8,888.60 with the extra above the care's fund, split between CCD and CCI. Questions? All papers, motion say aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carried. Okay. I guess this is...
Kind of a crackling fire.
It's a big fire right down there. The park?
Next to the, yeah, Marktown, I mean, or apartment side.
They'll be back, maybe.
I think we saw it down.
Yeah, it's crackling pretty good.
Oh, it's here, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't hear well, I can hear that. That's pretty good, it seems, right there. Uh, have we had any movement on somebody for the other council member?
We have had no movement.
No movement.
We have had no interest, no phone call, no... I have it in the newspaper, I have it at the post office here at the office, I have it at J T's. Um, yeah, I got nothing. The only thing I didn't do is put it on Facebook.
I'll put it through the...
So... Yeah.
It's, uh, what ward is it again?
Four.
Four? Three?
Oh.
Two?
Two. It's number two, I think.
Ward two?
I don't know.
No, I thought it was four.
It's not four.
Not four?
It's on the door, hold on, it's number, I'm pretty sure it's number two, because I had to look it up.
Oh, no, this boy for 20 years, not a lot of word it is.
I don't even know what mine is.
It's number two.
I just know our boy.
Stinky number two.
Ah, I'm fine, I know that.
There you go, leave rule to a mouth.
Yeah, it's number two. So...
Go ahead and put it on the town page, I guess.
Okay, I just put it on the town Facebook page with no comments?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Please. Tell them here's our chance to get involved.
Right.
Oh, yeah, but they wait till it got dark.
It's not already summer, that's what it's supposed to be.
They can have their bonfire with their hot dog and marshmallows.
I don't think...
Can't see it.
Hey, I think this is probably old business too, but I got a call from Joy today.
Oh, they phoned me.
No.
Six months later?
No, he said, he said, oh, I, I said, oh, we didn't hear from you, we didn't think you still interested, and he said, no, he said, we were just waiting for it to be warm and the weather be better. So...
Uh, they work all winter long.
I understand that, but that's what he told me. So anyway, he, um, he was getting information, they're gonna send over their insurance for climbing the tower, and then he would like come down, climb the tower, see if they think...
Oh, he's waiting for warm weather to climb the chaff?
Climb the tower, yeah.
I get it, okay.
Or when they climb the tower, yeah.
I hope we never have an issue with the same.
So, anyway.
They're waiting for warm weather.
It goes to you in June.
So, they would like to climb the tower, and I told them, I'm sure that's still fine. I sent the insurance lady the stuff with the certificate today, so I imagine I'll have it tomorrow and then they're supposed to do, give a call.
I don't know if I have a key anymore.
The what?
The tower guys changed the lock on that tower.
Oh, the ladder?
Yeah, I'll have to look. I think I can get it off there even if they did.
Okay.
I thought you considered that whole business, so...
Well, it is, that's been very...
No.
Quite old.
Yeah.
Ancient.
Ancient business.
Almost ancient.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, is this old business?
It has never been discussed as business, so, yeah. Tony, has Karen and I made any clues on Beto Street, kind of bid down there?
I haven't seen any.
Okay.
Any other old business? I know there wasn't a lot of business last time. You did a good job, just stay on the right through.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to new business. Another new business. Had a request from, uh, Rob Alderson, our wastewater operator, that one of the pumps at the main lift station out there on the, throwback over the Sulphur Bridge, is kaput and needs to be replaced. And the cost is $6,702.50 plus freight. If one pump's kaput and the other one goes out, we're in deep duty.
Yeah.
Of course, that wasn't what I said earlier, but...
No, it was not.
But literally, we are...
Yeah.
So, it needs to be, uh, approved to...
Is the freight gonna be a lot?
Well, I don't know where it comes from, it just says plus amount of freight.
It's about 800 pounds. So it's probably not gonna be real super cheap.
Where's it coming from?
No, I don't know. It'll be the freight to the places it's going to be.
The, yeah, the place it's getting it from is Wobash Alley Motor and Machine there, next to after set. There on, on the bridge, that's where it gets washed and from.
Indiana State Police, so we can't, G M L.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Purchase of the new pump, plus, and freight, plus, and maybe...
It's like, we don't really have a choice?
No, we don't.
No.
We don't want to be like those poor people in the...
Talk about the rock in the hard spot.
Yeah. Well, Rob seemed to think it's original equipment.
Oh, really?
So, that's, uh, had a long life.
We replaced the other one two years ago, I think it was.
Yeah.
Two or three years ago.
It's probably three years now.
We figured that up the other day, 1974, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, then moved to second to purchase a new lift station pump for $6,702.50 plus freight. Question? All papers say aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carried. Okay, enter. New business also. Is this item about the deployment agreement with the town marshal? Has everybody looked at the thing? They all had a copy of it, right? Apparently added one sentence on the, uh, section four, that says certifications must be presented to the town council upon completion. I think we have discussed that amongst ourselves. I assume by us agreeing with this, that he has to agree to her, what would be the portion? Well, because that's what we want.
Yeah, so...
So, need a motion to approve the town marshal employment agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
You're gonna have to do the...
Mine.
So, second?
We're discussing.
They're trying to slide which one wants to...
Yes.
Yeah. I threw it to Ben.
I'll second it. No, I'll take you out of it.
Hey, it just protects all of us.
Yeah.
We're going here second?
I can do that.
You can, yeah.
Well, now that we know that, we can take a nap over here.
You said you were tired.
We're sore handed, the pantry was super sore handed, it was Carol Martin, E, out of the seat.
Yeah, it was busy.
Like fifteen cars.
Oh, it's really coming this way now, isn't it?
Yeah, maybe you'll have to shut the door.
Yeah.
All they had on there was brush, I told them it's burning organs from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Let it get burned out and not be burning after 6:00, and I explained on the state statute about burning trash.
Yeah.
It smells like Morgan brush.
That's why they light it after dark.
They had stuff they were gonna throw on it, hadn't been on there yet.
Okay, then moved to second to approve the town marshal employment agreement. Question? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All same sign? Motion carried.
I've got some new business.
Okay, you take, take off.
Um, the pantry, since we got our nice driveway out here. Evan has to back up that trailer to unload our 60 to 80 boxes that we get, and, uh, there's quite a bit of drop off on the drive. He was wanting to put some gravel along on each side. He suggested that he would pay for it himself, but...
He can't back it up straight?
Nope, he can't.
Hey, this is all...
Honest about it.
The trailer just barely fits on.
Yeah.
Oh, that's in his defense.
Yeah, it's very difficult.
I say you go with the can side. More entertainment.
I'd ask him if he didn't get drivers in and screw it, buddy.
Does it need to be dipped out a little bit first?
Oh, there's quite a ledge there. Maybe a little bit to level it out.
In all the pins, we were gonna put dirt down both sides and plant grassy and everything, because if we put stuff on this side, I can't get to the mower, put the A C back there and everything, so we can fill this side with the rock, no big deal, but the other side, we have to mow it, and then mow it 16 inches wide.
We got that new weed eater.
Do we need to roll tide in or something?
Do we need to purchase a small mower from the mower man on South Main Street?
Yeah, a little pushy, a little pushy.
Do we need to do any trimming or anything?
Well, he was...
We dig it down and put it all the way across the driveway, you know?
All the way to neighbors?
Yeah, he was gonna talk to him about that.
Well, before we, you need to talk to the neighbor before you do that, right?
Yeah, he's gonna talk to him, but I suggested we just put it to the edge of our building, because...
I think that's all enough.
Yeah, because it's just...
Do we need to get some landscaping timber or something to keep the rock in?
No.
No?
I hate landscaping timber.
Yeah, but every time you back up, you're gonna start moving it.
We have some rare earth ties if you guys.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Justin's got some extras out there.
That's okay.
Yeah, he did. He did.
I think we need to tie it.
There's some land back there between the building.
What?
There's some.
Rare earth ties?
Those belong to them.
Those don't belong to us?
No, those are, that's, I'd say those are property owners.
Well, what do you guys think?
Well, I, I agree with what you're saying. Put the ties down, fill it with rock.
Yeah.
Both sides. That way it's only gonna have fun. And do we have money and something papered rock?
Sure can.
Yeah, I don't know. Everything's come for it.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Maybe we could get the smaller grade rock that doesn't move around so much. Kinda like a road path. What do you think, Rock Girl?
I'd say it's a fifty trees.
Yeah.
With line distance, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, fifty trees have a line with them.
Okay, that sounds good to me. I knew you would know.
But if I have this freight, we wanna dig off the neighborhood and then dig it all the way down across and then put rare earth ties beside their driveway.
Can you use what we used for the window stand?
I think there's gonna be an issue with that.
We can.
If that's still an improvement.
The kids live there, the parents are in Lori.
Local road street or MVA.
Huh?
They don't know how to maintain it.
So I think, yeah.
Well, but I guess there's been some.
I mean, I think we, because we're not doing the driveway or anything, so I think it's not MVA or local road street, so.
Need a motion to place rock on both sides of the drive to the pantry.
I'll make a motion and I'll second it.
They moved a segment to place rock on both sides of the drive back to the pantry. Question? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Since we're talking about the pantry, um, the Park County Resource Center has recently been approved to receive T cap commodities, which means they'll be getting a lot more, um, not larger quantities, but it will get some different things that won't cost anything. We kinda got emergency approval for that because of COVID. So that's pretty good for us because then we're able to buy some of the things we like to buy for people. But then that'll give us another revenue of like, or another revenue with another stream of good quality food to provide. So, there's that.
Well, so there's that.
Well, Park County's created a new food security alliance, which the, which they're a part of. And then I've done some stuff on my office forum and they do a meeting like the third. But they're trying to get out two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for food insecurity and they're coming all together. So everyone's kinda working together for that. Good stuff going on.
Well, it's good stuff. They've got five million dollars for turnoff.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
That's right.
Some people.
Are native Nancys?
Uh, yes, they are.
Yes, they are. And let me say on the record, which I said this to some people, this is money for the trails came from the toll roads in northern Indiana. And they made those toll road agreements under the Daniel's administration. The commercial vehicles that go, like the trucks that go through, they raised those several years ago about forty percent to funnel that money back into this. So as far as like the local tax dollars, that's not from that. And that money was never going to roads. And actually, some of that money did go to bridge projects and things like that. That money was allotted. But it was also set aside for the trails because that is a priority, so.
Good.
And since, and since we are on video, I'd like once again to invite anybody from Park County to our pantry. Tuesdays, four to six, Saturdays, ten to noon. Everybody can qualify, no matter income or anything, so welcome to come.
All right. Any other new business? Tony, our delicious green dump truck has springed out a loop. And what?
Free float. Free float.
Free float.
The last one was on the side of the motor, pretty easy to get to. This one is between the motor and the tran- transmission.
That's well.
So either the tranny's gotta come out or the motor's gotta come out. I suggest we put them all in, but we've already had to replace one.
Is Cliff good at that? Cliff? Well, he's, well, he's working on mechanical stuff.
I don't know.
I think this might be above a cliff project.
Is it?
Perhaps.
It's a, it's a little, it'll go up. It's just a bolt motor. Um, if you're gonna do all free float, you need to say you did pull the motor out. And while you're at it, just over remain sealant. Because it's the next thing you go to start leaking. I have no idea what's going to fall. I don't even know where to go with it.
Well, let's get some estimates. Because that truck's so old, we might need to think about something.
Yeah.
I have seen some wet paper say. Okay. Any other new businesses?
Well, Tony and Cliff fixed a, how big a square? The, they changed the.
Probably five by six, four or six.
They changed the dismissal route for the walkers at school. And I don't know if you remember, even when Robin and Jane Anne were in kindergarten, that walk that came out from the front would get flooded. Something terrible. Well, they're coming out that same area now and.
Go back to the A stand?
Yes, yes. And they fixed a place in the space between the sidewalk and the street with crushed rock and stuff today.
Or water again to.
That will be nice. Of course, when the kids came out today, the crossing guards, I motioned to her what it was and she said, oh, I'll come over there. She came there and the kids all angled the grass. But anyway, it is a nice job that they.
Okay, good job.
Did it will help the school kids.
Yeah. Well, as soon as the work weather gets warm, I'm gonna be like that. Okay, find out what that is. Good. Joint could come out there too.
I'll get with them. Yeah, that one, that's what I meant.
Okay, any other new business? Well, let's go to department reports then. Officer?
Oh, um, twenty nine hung three water tags. We shut no one off.
You weren't got three? You're lengthless?
No, we hung three tags for shut off. Because of the snow, I extended the penalty date because the office was closed because of our big snowstorm. So the, the number of penalties was less. I believe it was around eighty. And I'm just about to make a report. Um, but pretty notices, we didn't shut anybody off. Everybody paid, so.
Good.
I, I've just been writing on, I've been highlighting on people's bills when they're past due. And sometimes I'll write, need to make payment before I disconnect. And people have been doing pretty good. I'm, I collected a big debt today on a guy that I rented in town. I wrote him a nice little note on his bill that I sent to him. He came back in today with a three hundred and fifty dollar payment. Cleared that one out.
Wow.
So we've been actually doing pretty good, so.
How many penalties? You say eighty?
Around eighty, yeah.
Have you got?
I just don't see that number ever coming down.
You have quite a few on, you know, that's doing a payment type plan.
We don't really have anybody on a particular payment plan right now. Um.
Cause I know we were, we offered that.
We offered that, but really, most of them are in pretty good shape. I got some people that all have to private next week with some tags, but, you know, a lot of people are getting their tax money in. So I have another way to cross town pay a big bill. She had been making payments, but she just gave it up, paying all her zip code the other day, so.
Oh, that's good.
We're gonna do it pretty good. And then you guys met with Tony the other day, so, yeah.
And never haven't heard any more from her.
I haven't heard any more from her, so.
I guess there's quite a few leaks there, Tony said.
There's another household in town that's kinda trying to do the Kansas City shuffle on me. They had, today I got a call that they, someone was going to rent that house. And I told them that they're gonna need to have their landlord give me a call because we're not going to let a property owner have past due bill and be shut off and then a tenant go in there and get service. I talked to Scott Craig about this and that's completely within our agreements and things like that, so. Yeah, things are going pretty good on that one.
Good.
All right. They have any issues with, uh, leaks, water leaks? We had, we made pretty good through the winter, didn't we?
We had one that popped up after that snow. Um, we went from averaging between thirty-five and sixty-five thousand to right at a hundred thousand. And we tracked it down. It was up at the hill, empty house that they still had water in. It's gonna take them care of. They're deciding what they're gonna do.
So there wasn't anybody in the house that froze up?
Yeah, their furnace quit. They had the furnace on and everything. They left, he said, he said they left it dripping like they always did when his mom lived there. But I said, well, yeah, when she was there, she flushed the toilet every day. She was doing laundry, doing dishes. I said, definitely works hard overnight, not for weeks at a time.
Um, I, I expect that to, that's been a minimal bill for as long as I've been here. And he got a decent sized bill, like over a hundred dollars, which is around the lot for somebody up there with just water. But I expect the next bill to be out of this world astronomical. Twenty-nine are clear, anticipate.
Over a hundred thousand gallons.
How some gallons of water, I mean, we don't, we don't.
That's a tank full.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we don't know what it's gonna be, so I've already talked to the guy about it. He already paid that high bill in anticipation that this would be the bill we will have to adjust on it.
It was basically a three quarter inch line running wide open.
Yeah.
And it busted.
For days.
It busted before I read on the twenty-fourth. Um, and we, what was it, two weeks?
Yeah, it was a while before you were like, okay, I gotta go to empty houses. Which houses are empty?
Gary sent me a message and said, we're at ninety-nine thousand gallons. Um, and start looking for leaks. I was like, dude, there's still on the ground. I mean, all right. Um, couldn't find anything. Then we really melted off. And then we had that rain. But when I was up driving the line checking, that's when I called her and I said, hey, how many houses we have that's empty that we're living in, but we still have water on them? She named them off. I said, okay, well, I'm gonna check this along the hill. And usually the ditch out front's got some water in it, but the entire backyard had ponds everywhere. And when I stood out the road and looked across, you could see water moving from the house.
Any wastewater issues? Since you got that, uh, pump out there fixed.
Other than the pump, no.
Good. Uh, street department report.
Seen some patching going on? Have you been filling holes? Is that you?
We filled everything we could think of. Um, we filled a little bit down there, cemetery on the corner. It's always washing out.
Yeah.
The semis, we filled that. Um, we cleaned up these ditches coming up this way. We cleaned up the, the manholes of the short spot drains. We cleaned those out last week. And I went through today and cleaned up all the ditch. We're trying to get some off the sidewalks and stuff.
Good.
That was coming up real soon.
Yeah, I hear I say that, that one over there by the park, not right down that one, but when you make a corner by that little house, it's just, it's horrendous.
Yeah.
It's gonna need it soon.
Okay. Park department?
I guess we're waiting till warm weather before we do a sign.
I actually talked to her today. Carol.
Yeah, I was texting.
I think joints make good signs.
Carol has gone back and forth with her and she's been crazy ridiculously busy. She's got some.
Is this Hannah that's?
This is Hannah. Yes, it's Hannah. So, listen. So she's got someone extra coming in on the weekends to help make signs and do some of this. She's coming in this weekend. Our sign's number one priority.
In her defense, the sign that they ordered was a little big, so they had to cut it down. And when they cut it, she didn't give instructions in crayon. So they cut just off of this end and for some reason they cut six inches off this way too. When I was too small, so they had to order a new sign boy.
Yeah, it's just gonna, yeah.
Oh.
And that's your update.
Yeah, she's been really backed up.
So, cause I, I asked her to make it square so it would sit on those posts better, but apparently they.
Took out rectangle?
Yeah, so. But I mean, we could probably work with it.
I know you talked to Flashman about, uh, water power to the park.
Yeah, some bike racks. Talking about that.
Anything update on that?
Um, I will say this. Nancy Duckett from Purdue, our law's coordinator, she met with Jeremy Montgomery, my brother in law, as a representative of the foundation and R.A.M.C. She's kinda doing some grant seeking. He's, we got some forever fund money sitting up there that we can, that's kinda earmarked for recreation in the park. So we're looking to do a little bit of planning with that. Um, who, do we just need to call Duke about the power?
Well, you know, there used to be lights over there.
Right. Carol said there, she used to play a record player over there.
Yes, back in the day.
You did?
Yeah, I would take my record player under.
At that shelter?
Under the shelter and we would dance under there.
I would give anything.
Wouldn't you like to?
I'd love to do that.
Dang.
Ha, ha, ha.
I'd love, no, I would love like, that'd be so cool. I mean.
Well, yeah, now all you have to do is take your phone with you.
Yeah, I'm just popping up now.
Have you, have you looked at Duke's website for any grants for that?
Um, I have not. I, there's a, the safety coordinator out of Duke is a friend of mine. I'll give them a shout tomorrow.
They have grants available. The park department's looking at it.
It's gonna require.
We could do that.
Yeah.
Service.
And each frame and everything to have a.
Yeah. I'll give, I'll give them a.
Meter panel and all that stuff. And then it's gonna be required a, a truction.
Turn kids loose.
To. Uh, neither one get to do that. I think that big for one inch pipe to do it too.
But what about water?
You, you want to know that?
I, I don't know. So, I mean, I'm only here fifteen years.
There's, uh, farther over by the merry-go-round. There's three potential spots over there. I found something like which. One down between the merry-go-round and the slide. And then there was two back this way.
That's where it was at, Tony. Over by the merry-go-round and the slide, next to the.
There's something out there, but I don't know if it was capped in the park or it was capped out by the road or I have no idea. But I'm just, that's a deal of our investigating on that, I guess. Okay. Is that enough parking?
Yes.
All right, party department?
Uh, they had six bedrooms. Do we have any breakfast news?
We are going to do a drive-through breakfast this month. Um, in the hopes to be able to open up and have a sit-down breakfast on Easter. Uh, on the governor's mandate. The mask mandate runs until the thirtieth, so we're hoping, since there's about sixteen states that have opened up, that maybe will be by the end of the month hopefully opened up. So we'll decide that a little bit later in the month and then.
This month?
We'll post it on. So, the twenty. So, the twenty?
First, twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
And April fourth.
Twenty-first will be a drive-through, so.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Fingers crossed.
Hopefully the weather's somewhat decent, and we don't have to stand out for degree weather and snow to head out breakfast.
All right, good news. Cemetery?
Do we have anything, Natalie? I didn't see.
No, nothing like that out there. I can smell gray, cause I don't know who on the.
Oh, I can.
Well, you do have cleanup done up.
Yes, we do have cleanup.
Has to demo twenty-first?
All flowers and decorations must be removed from the grave. I'm reading this, you know. Sites before March twenty-first to allow for spring cleanup. Any decorations not removed will be disposed of. You may begin replacing decorations on April second. That's Good Friday.
We have posted that to Facebook page. It was in the newspaper, and we have felt signs filled with ghost dogs and J T's.
There's quite a bit of stuff out there.
How about having one down at the civic center?
Okay.
For their bowls of board down there.
Okay.
Cause some of the people that go to civic center don't go to either one of those places. It may not have a computer. It may not take the scent.
Will that be home? Yep.
That'll be good.
Okay.
Okay, police department?
They had eight traffic stops, one accident slide-off, two assist other agency, one unknown, one then title check, four citations, three warnings.
County, nine zero one. I've got a couple things to police department.
Well, I guess you're up there.
Um, one is just more of an information thing. The body cams that we have are about five years old. And the one I'm using, I was out on a traffic stop the other night. It was the second traffic stop I was out on. And it went dead on me right in the middle of the traffic stop, so I'm gonna seek, I've got some pricing on some new ones, but I'm gonna try to seek a grant from Park County Community Foundation. It's been a while since we've asked them for anything, so I'm gonna pursue that with them. I just want the board to know that. Uh, the second thing is training. Typically, we go to the I D E A training in Indianapolis every year. And we get about twenty hours of our mandates, uh, which Chris and I went last year. Clyde wasn't able to go. And then we always go, we qualify every year for our handguns and our shotgun and rifle. This year, that was canceled, so we weren't able to pin that. So, I started seeking alternatives for training, uh, to be able to get our mandated twenty-four hours per year. What I found is a company called Police One Academy. They're actually owned by Lexi Poll, and Lexi Poll is the company that I have doing our, uh, our SOPs for us. So, I contacted them and asked them about their system. It's an internet, internet-based system. They have several hundred hours of online training. Uh, you sign up per user. They have a minimum of five hundred dollars plus a setup fee. I talked to one of their representatives, explained to their, like, our situation here in town, being a small department, with just a couple of park kind people and a reserve. They quoted me, uh, at ninety dollars per user and a one-time setup fee of sixty dollars instead of three hundred. So, we can sign up for training, um, would be two users, being me, myself, and Clyde. Cause Chris actually gives all his stuff through Vigo County, since he works for the sheriff's department down there. We can sign up for this training for two hundred and forty dollars for the year. And that gives us access to almost four hundred hours of training, and it covers all the mandated stuff through the state. And they'll actually assist us in, when we're done with stuff, they will report it straight to the C A T S portal. One thing actually I also did too is I actually got Saint Mary's to sign up for this for our department out there. Uh, I'm the admin on it out there, and we just, we actually just got it all set up, started last week. So, I would like to get us signed up for this. So, myself and Clyde would each get set up as a user, and then it'd be upon, up to each individual to go through and take the courses. Like, we can set the courses up, and we can choose the ones we want to go through. And then it's a matter of logging into the computer, sitting there and watching the videos of the PowerPoint or whatever it may be. There's text that goes along with it, and then at the end it gets reported that C A T S.
Then would they send a certification to us?
To you guys? No, but they'll send it to our emails. It's all based off our, off an email address. I mean, every time you do a class, I actually did two out at Saint Mary's last week just to see how they work. And when I'm done, it comes up and says you're done, and you have your certification for that hour of class, or two-hour class, whatever it may be. That shows you completed it. And if you choose, you can print each one of those out as you go along. Or I can just, you can log into a computer anywhere, and I can bring them up and show everybody. Like, if I had my laptop right now, I could show you mine from out there, but it's just a matter, they just start listing every one of them.
So, you could like forward your email to Natalie, so we could have.
We just print the certificate on the.
Say you print out.
Well.
Yeah, if you wanna copy it, I just turn it out.
Do you have a printer then?
Pinner in the office.
Yeah, they got one over there. They can just turn them out and turn them in.
Yeah, that's where we'll go, go there in the office more likely.
Yeah.
But the alternative, since they canceled I D E A, we have to find somewhere to get training, and it's hard to travel places and do all this. All you gotta do is walk over to the, go to the office and sit down and log in. It's extremely inexpensive. I mean, for two people. How many you talking about, Tony? Two hundred and forty bucks.
For both of you?
This man total, for a year.
That's pretty good. Twenty dollars for the training.
Considering when we go to I D E A, we spend probably, what do we spend, Natalie, to go up there? A thousand dollars probably?
About a thousand dollars by the time we do hotel for three nights.
Hotels and food and the course itself.
Class itself, yeah. Now, I D E A owes us one?
Correct. I'm gonna talk to you about that. We need to get back with them and see if we can get that back, cause that'll pay, almost pay for this.
That would almost pay for that, yes.
Who's, who's this to?
This is called, uh, Police One Academy.
Police One.
Yep.
Who made the move? Who made the second? Becky?
Thank you.
Okay.
And if you guys wanna copy of this, I just need this back, cause I got a sign I can send it to them.
The group's saying to enroll the police department in the exchangement for, uh, Police One Academy for two hundred and forty dollars. Question? All favor say aye.
And it's all credited through Law Enforcement Training Board. I want to make sure that they're actually one of their certified providers of training.
Something's good, Coach. You did real, did well on your research there.
Yeah, thanks.
And it can be done at any time, so there's no excuse for anybody not to do it.
Oh, that's right.
Correct. Twenty-four seven. All you gotta do is have a computer or a tablet, whatever. And then login codes, that's it.
So, you're gonna check on the body cams too on the foundation?
Yeah, I've got a couple quotes. Um, two new body cams and chargers and everything. It's gonna be a thousand dollars. But in light of past events, they can, uh, be extremely helpful. Clearing up some things.
So, you said two?
It's what we have. Probably always adds two.
So, if, I assume that's you and Clyde. What of Chris?
Um, there's two in the, they said in the office in the charger.
Okay.
Yes, it is. Is that it?
Yep, I think so, yeah.
Okay. Quick treasury report.
Okay. I have completed our annual report. It was in the paper last week. And working through this report, which they add more and more stuff to it every single year. It just gets more and more fun. So, I talked about being negative in N B H at the end of the year because of money on N B H restricted. Well, we had all the money in restricted, and unfortunately, this is an S, State Department Accounts, D G L F kind of disagreement. So, State Department Accounts wants this N B H restricted, and the D G L F wants it to all be together. They, they don't wanna consider that two separate funds, which is kinda hard on us clerk treasurer. So, in talking all this through and trying to draw what to do, I reached out to Brazil for friend of her Karen McLean. She was extremely helpful, and the directives from State Department Accounts saying you're supposed to put half of your N B H revenue into N B H restricted, which is what I did all year. But if you delve into the state statute a little bit further, it's only half of your gasoline tax that has to go into there. So, I put half a wheel tax and half a surtax and all that stuff in there. So, I was able to go back to Keystone and have them unlock all my months and move that revenue over. So, we did not land in the negative in N B H. So, there are corrected fund reports for every month. These have all been uploaded into my gateway. So, if anybody wants to look at them, you can, cause I did make those changes. But I was, I'm glad I worked through it, and I didn't end up with that in the negative. Public safety did land in the negative. We have simply overspent in it. We do not generate enough to have a nineteen thousand dollar a year budget in there. We do need to reduce that a little bit. It is regenerating, because we do see like seven or eight hundred dollars a month in there. So, it'll be back into positive in the next few months, but we may come up with a realistic savings plan on that. It just, that's just the way that hooked out. But the whole, the whole fund is done. I need to work on capitalization of assets. I had Tony go through and do a pretty good inventory of all of our equipment a couple of weeks ago. Because I don't, I don't really know what the, there's no, I have never found a capital asset ledger in the office. I found one, but it's not very specific, and I don't know what the assets online are really based upon. So, that is something that over the next, um, year, I really need to kinda delve into. And get a plan on, cause it's kinda confusing, and it's becoming a big part of clerk treasurer duties, so.
Did we, did we ever get from Rob a list of equipment for the insurance?
We did not. We did not.
Do we need one from Adrian for the water?
We probably do. Um, there is, Adrian did make an adjustment, I did notice, in capital assets. We had a pretty good jump the year that we did the big wastewater project. There's a number online on our annual reports of what, like, six million dollars of our capital assets is worth. But I don't know what's what in that number, except what I can't get to. Some of that is probably based on insurance values somewhere along the way. But you actually can't capitalize insurance values according to State Department Accounts, so it's kinda confusing. But, um, I have them send me the insurance policies and what they value everything at to have some kind of a starting point. It's only eight hundred and forty-eight gigs long, so eventually I'll find those numbers somewhere in the policy. Yeah, nice. Nice is right. Um, anyway, that's kinda stressing me out, but, but no, that's never been done. And actually, Tim Fungleton, that is actually the owner of M G S now, M V S now, it's actually R T Insurance. He said that he can come, he's actually in Brazil, I think Mondays and Wednesdays. He said that just he could glance at some of the, I pulled out the tote that has all the grant stuff in that when we did that. He said he could probably just pull some numbers out of that to kind of make a general assumption of what's out there. If need be.
Got to take pictures of what's out there, too.
Yeah. Yeah, that could be done too. So, that's kinda what's had me really busy in there, kind of backed up and stressed out. But I did, but I did get some good help out of Karen in Brazil. She was really good. I am signed up to participate in the, in the Emily Municipal Clerk Treasures Academy next week, which is the fifteenth through the eighteenth. Typically, that is a, um, nice little trip to go on. This year, it's all online. I'll probably do some of it in the office, but then I'll probably do some of it from home, because it never fails that once I start a webinar in there, fifteen thousand people call or want to come in, so. So, it'll be kinda ended out. That's next week. That's Monday through Thursday next week, so there's difference in nights each day.
Did you ever get laptop?
I did not buy a laptop, so.
Well, if you had a laptop, you could come in here.
I know. I could come in here. You're correct. So, I, yeah. Um, but with the, um, American Rescue Plan that's on Joe Biden's desk, there's gonna be some money flow back down for additional things, so either laptop can be included in that, cause I would really rather have windows down than laptop. So, I have a personal laptop, which I can dial in on if I need to. So, so that's what I have going on in here. Happy to resolve the N B H restricted, N B H issue. Still stressful, and I guess I talked to Scott Craig today, and they do wanna make more changes to that. But, um, nonetheless, that's about it for me.
Okay. Good lights blinking in here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kinda dim there for a minute. That one just going up.
Okay.
We need new lights next.
We go back around the, uh, room again. Turn it away here. Ricky. Jerry left.
Jerry thinks that they're gonna be here Thursday for the foster.
Finally?
We're gonna have to tap F ninety.
Oh, you mean Ralph's tags?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. They're gonna be inside.
All right. No public comments? Pay the motion, pay the bills as presented?
I like the motion to pay the bills. I'll second it.
Then move to second to pay the bills as presented. Anything under questions? All favor's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All say aye? Motion. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
And move to second to adjourn to our next round of meeting. All favor say aye?
Aye.
All right.
All say aye? Thank you, everyone.